This time, I'd like to call to order the April 11th, 2007 Planning Commission meeting, but the records show that Mr. Mike Bardwell and Mr. Scott Courtwright are not present. Before we get started, I have a couple of announcements. The public hearing for Dutch Town Gardens has been removed from our agenda, so we will not be discussing that issue this evening. I also like to recognize Mr. Ron Sigler. Ron, as much as we've talked, I want to make sure I get this right. You are the active or acting planning director?
Acting Planning Director.
Okay. I encourage, if you haven't had a chance to talk with Mr. Sigler, go and introduce yourself to him. Take it easy on him. He's still kind of finding his way around. So, that's the item three on our agenda. Acceptance of the minutes of the March 14th, 2007 meeting.
I'm moved to accept.
Have a motion to approve by Don Grant?
Second.
Second by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item four, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on any item, agenda item, that's not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Item five, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions. 5A Ted Mayon Senior Estate, lots 2-E and 2-F.
James Faugu, representing Ted Mayon, and Mrs. Scott Bregnack, on the following family partition. Some comments were made according to our plat, and all comments were addressed and corrected. Asking the Planning Commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak on this item. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Don Grant to approve.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item six, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivision. 6A The Grove subdivision.
I'm Mark Mann with GSA Engineers, and I'm representing The Grove subdivision. All requirements, I mean, all comments and requirements have been met, and we're asking for preliminary approval for The Grove subdivision.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from the commissioners, then anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak on this item. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. These houses on these first two lots, are those staying there?
Yes, ma'am. They're staying there. There will be access from the present driveways on 74.
Okay. My other question is, are you going to have restrictions for this neighborhood? And if so, are these two front lots going to be included in that?
I'll have to ask for some technical support on that. Mr. David Shackleford, the developer for The Grove subdivision.
David Shackleford, the question is, yes, they're going to be included in the restrictions throughout the whole subdivision.
Okay. And there were some comments made by the engineers that have not been corrected?
They have. We have addressed all comments with CSRS, the review agent, Mr. Sean Chereau, Mr. Bob Turner, and Mr. Charles Becknell.
So, the 50-foot centerline radius has been corrected?
Yes, ma'am. That has been corrected.
It is, it's not, the alignment that they have submitted to us since this letter, we have seen a different centerline alignment, and that's not shown on this plat that's in front of you right now, that I have in front of me unless they passed a new revised one out.
No, I haven't, I haven't passed anyone out, but we have addressed those comments.
Okay, so Sean, y'all are satisfied with that? With the new plat?
We are satisfied with the alignment they've provided with us, but we have not reviewed to see how that new alignment, how it may or may not encroach on the Jackson property lots or any of that. No, we have not.
And what about the emergency weir? Have you guys taken care of that?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And you're okay with that, Sean?
Yes, they've provided information to work, yes.
Sean, isn't the question whether or not the new radius doesn't encroach into that barn?
The...
I don't have the revised drawing in front of me, but when you showed it to me, my question to the applicant is, does the owner of the lot in front, is he aware of that new revised geometry for the road?
David, I have, I have the revised layout, should you allow me to pass them out?
Sure.
Because it shows that the shed's going to be removed.
As David was saying, the shed on the plans, it says the shed is to be removed.
What about the comment on the emergency weir? Sean, was that?
Yes, that has been addressed since this letter's been issued.
Okay, to your satisfaction?
Yes, we have seen it, yes.
So, let me get this straight. Mr. Schafter Kling's property is or will be part of this subdivision?
Yes, sir.
O'Neill?
Sir?
He has two houses on the remaining lot. Will this render him a non-conforming?
It's an existing house.
It's an existing condition, but it will no longer conform with the code.
Yeah, it's an existing matter. I don't think he requires a variance for that.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Michael.
I'm going to make a motion to approve with a, with a condition that the barn be removed as part of the development permit for the subdivision.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
I wanted, I had a question for Michael, real quick.
Okay.
Just on this new plat that you've seen, are you satisfied with that, the road, the radius?
Yes, I'm satisfied with, I had seen the radius earlier. My only question was making sure it didn't require another person's piece of property or that if this is all part of the development and Schafter Kling understands the new alignment, then that's all I wanted to make sure.
Has Mr. Kling seen, seen the new alignment? He's okay giving up some of his property?
Yes, I call on Mrs. Shackleford.
Okay, then I will second Julio's motion.
Okay. I have a second by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Before we go to the next agenda item, I happen to recognize someone else that's with us this evening. I want to call it to the attention of the commissioners. It's Mr. Bob Turner, the new director of DPW. We appreciate you joining us tonight, Bob. Looking forward to working with you. Okay, item seven, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision. The Crossing.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, asking for your final approval for the Crossing, formerly Mancheck Harbor Crossing. There weren't any comments to the final plat. We're asking for your approval based on us posting the maintenance bond.
Comments, questions from commissioners? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up, speak on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Ellen, this is sort of related. I know there was some property adjacent to this being donated to the parks, and just from my own information, is that shown on this map, on this plat? Do you know, you may not know, I'm sorry. I don't mean to ask you anything.
Do you have another sheet? Can I get your sheets running? In that folder?
The second sheet?
And then? A sheet.
I'm sorry?
She was asking about a park. She was asking something about a park.
Yeah, I had been reading about a park that was being donated, and I understand it was around Cotton Bayou, and I thought it was somewhere adjacent to this property. That's what I was asking about.
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. That's, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
A motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell.
Second.
Second by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing to consider the following simple division of property with a variance. 8A The JC Debate Estate, lots C-1-A through C-1-E, C-2-A, and lots C-3-A through C-3-E.
Ellen Jackson again with McLean and Associates, proposing this simple division with a waiver. There weren't any comments. We're asking for your approval. I am here if there are any technical questions dealing with the map. The owner is here for all other questions.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please sign in with the secretary. He'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a comment. This looks like the subdivision. It looks like a 10-lot subdivision. It looks like the one we had recently, similar to this, where it's a subdivision without having to follow the subdivision ordinance.
The reason we're trying to do it this way is, we had split this property. We actually bought this property. It's one door over from where I live, and a track builder was going to purchase this property and put in a major subdivision. So, we bought it, and me and my partner split it up in halves to sell it as 29-acre tracks. We have had no interest in eight months or so. So, we came back to planning and zoning to see if there was a way to do something different. We actually went to the Board of Variants to see if we could put some lots up front and leave the remaining in the back because we hunt on it and that type of thing, just to basically pay for the place. And they said it wasn't a hardship to be able to create lots up front. So, I met with Mr. Charles and them to see if there was a compromise in the middle, and this is what we've come up with, basically. You know, nowhere else in the parish are we going to get 4-acre tracks out of 40 acres. What we did, there was a question that if we sold these lots, how could we stop it from being created to make them smaller lots again? If you notice on the plat, we put it in, and we were told by the parish, Mr. Charles and them in the meeting, that if it's recorded on the plat, it then becomes law. So, we record it on here. If you see, that it can never be subdivided again. These are the smallest these tracks can get. That way, we could assure that another developer or builder wouldn't come in, buy tracks, and then split them up into 80-foot lots, the easy way. It is a private servitude, so the parish will never have to worry about a road. And then, the one that we have in the back, if you notice the big track in the back, we also put on the plat that it'll never be smaller than the 40-acre track that it is. That's where we basically hunt on, play on, that kind of thing, and we're going to leave it as is.
O'Neill, from a, from a legal perspective, the verbiage there, would that apply to family partition hardships in the future that may come up that are unforeseen now?
It says, "No further reception will ever be allowed." I think that's, I think that's pretty strong language. I don't think they can divide it anyway.
We said we would put it into restrictions, and they said restrictions couldn't really be enforced. That's why we come up with this verbiage on the map, to be recorded with the map.
And they could never get a variance?
You never say never, they could come back, but they'd have to come before commissions to do it again, and they'd have to explain those reasons why.
Right, so they would come back through the family partition process, just like they would any other process, right?
They'd have to go through any other process, right. They can't just do it, you know, you just can't split them up and get a simple division or just submit something where the chairman can sign. They'd have to come back before the commission, whether it be this commission or a subsequent commission, to resolve those issues. That's why it's on the plat.
It's also going to be, I know they say restrictions aren't enforceable, but it's also going to be recorded with the cash sale, that they understand that it can no longer be subdivided any smaller than that.
Yeah.
And basically, what we're trying to do is, the reason we bought it, we're trying to keep it as big a track as we can and still pay for the place. And, you know, this is what we come up with. If I go put a normal subdivision, obviously, you can't do 10 4-acre lots and pay for paved streets and sewer and water, and that's an impossibility.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I mean, I admire what you're trying to do. It's nice to have subdivision with 4-acre tracks. I mean, I admire that, but, I mean, the fundamental difference between doing it the way you're doing it and a subdivision, you know, you'd need a slightly wider access road, and you'd have to pave it. You could conceivably have on-site sewn water with a 4-acre lot. I would still encourage you to reconsider doing a subdivision and letting the future owners of these parcels of land deal with it, ask these so wish with the commission, you know, and give them that opportunity. I don't, I mean, I hope they never come, but I don't want to preclude them from being able to come either. I would rather, I would rather see this as a subdivision, as a standalone, regular subdivision.
At the cost of a blacktop road and all the engineering that's going to be involved and stuff, that's impossible. There's no way. I'd have to, if I have to go that route, I'm going to come back with a 2-lots-per-acre deal. I mean, you can't pay for a 1,800-foot blacktop road with 10 lots. That's impossible. There's no way.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
If we allow it, I think we're setting a precedence. I think, I think someone could come with smaller lots and say, well, you let them do it, why can't I do it? I think we have to deny. Therefore, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny.
I have a motion by Sherri Slimon to deny.
A second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight, the Charles Dixon tract. Is there anyone here representing the Charles Dixon tract?
One named Arielle Bennett, engineer and surveyor, representing Dixon. It's my understanding Mr. Dixon has some serious health problems. He wants to donate this tract to his wife, so that's why we're asking for this approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Don Grant to approve.
I will second that and would request the motion maker to include the requested waiver from Section 35.104. They would have to have a waiver from the requirement up front on a, on a public street.
Alex Edgert.
So, I have a motion to approve with a variance.
That's right.
By Don Grant, the second by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Okay.
Item nine, committee reports. Subdivision ordinance committee met last month. There were various items that we discussed, which I think there was something in your, as the all-purpose or general servitudes. We'd hope to get, we'd hope to get this information out to the commissioners earlier. Unfortunately, our legal counsel's been tied up with various things, so we were only able to get these items to you today. commission, to get feedback, if you want to proceed, if you think that there's more work that needs to be done, or...
I don't think they've got enough time to look at it and make that decision right now. They're just getting the information tonight.
And that's, once again, that can be part of the discussion, as far as do we want to hold off on this and look at it, go ahead and bring, we'll bring it up for a vote at the next meeting?
I think so.
Looks like there's a couple of question marks here that need to have numbers for as well.
That is something O'Neill and I were talking about. We can, the commission can go ahead and, we can discuss at the next subcommittee meeting as far as the timeframe and so forth, so...
I think you need to have a public hearing on the amendment of, on this amendment of, this particular amendment of the bylaws, because it is affecting how presentations are made.
Right.
And the other two, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we really need to have...
Would probably be best to have public hearings on both.
Okay.
Just do it that way. So, I guess what I'm looking for is a motion as far as having a public hearing pertaining to our bylaws.
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Paige Becknell.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. And then, a motion on the all-purpose and general servitudes, verbiage.
I'm moved to do the same thing.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item two on this email pertaining to the East Ascension Consolidated Gravity and Drainage shall provide the drainage checklist, and the Ascension Parish Department of Public Works shall provide the road checklist. That was an issue that O'Neill, or Michael and O'Neill brought before us last month. In the subcommittee meeting, we discussed it more of a policy issue, I think, than anything else, be handled in-house. Just that we recognize that, I think, more than anything else. I don't think that's anything that has to be changed in an ordinance, so I don't know if we really need to have a public hearing on that. Of course, we will be having our subcommittee meeting a week from this Friday at 12:00 PM. All commissioners are invited to attend, as well as the public. So, that completes my report. Strategic Planning Committee. O'Neill, did you attend?
Nope.
Okay, so we don't have a Strategic Planning Committee report. Item nine, new business. Any items of new business to be brought before the commission this evening? Ain't no items of new business. Item 11, old business. Jimmy Galche property, lots 2-A-1-A, 2-A-1-B, 2-A-2-A, 2-A-2-B, 2-A-2-C. lots 2-A-1-A, 2-A-1-B, 2-A-2-A, 2-A-2-B, 2-A-2-C.
Very good.
I've been practicing all week.
Ellen Jackson again. This servitude revocation was approved in January, then it was referred on to the Council. However, they sending it back here. We have the letters from the utility companies, and also from DPW saying that they have no objection. But the Councilman that objected it, I believe his name was Jerry Savory, I have spoken to him on the phone, and his concern was making sure that this plat had proper servitude for drainage. But this is concerning just moving a utility servitude, so I'm asking.
Where does drainage come into a utility servitude? We try to keep those separate.
This, this, the issue that came before, this committee never had anything to do with drainage. It was the fact that there was a, there was a, I know, I don't understand.
Well, I happened to watch part of the Council meeting where this item came up, and I saw some of the discussion. I heard where drainage was coming up, and I couldn't figure that out either. What came before this Commission was the revocation of a utility servitude.
Yes.
Now, unless something changed, and of course, I'm going to need to get some input from DPW and anyone else that can answer, there was no objection by utility companies. There was no objection from Public Works. The staff recommendation was to revocate the servitude as recommended by DPW. Now, that's, that was the item that came before this Commission. So there was no, there were no grounds for us to deny it, as I recall. Now, if somebody can shed any light on it, if something has changed that should cause this Commission to deny, then they need to come forward and let us know just what it is.
My recollection was it had the proper drainage servitudes. That wasn't an issue to start with, anyway. That was not the issue. That was a funny, the way the servitudes were originally dedicated.
Well, I thought this was more or less just really an issue of housekeeping more than anything else. You're getting rid of this servitude because eventually they're going to dedicate a new utility servitude?
Yes. And I explained this to Mr. Savory, but he said this is the only chance he gets, you know, to get his drainage servitude.
I don't know. Any comments or questions from Commissioners?
Well, does this have to go back to public hearing? Or do we just need a motion to send it back to the parish, to the Council?
I don't see where we'd need a public hearing for it. Do you, O'Neal?
No, I think you need to make a motion to send it back to the Council, so it meets all the criteria of the, of the, already.
Keep our motion as it was originally stated and send it back to them. I make that motion.
Okay, so you, okay, your motion is to, once again, approve the revocation of this utility servitude.
Right.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon. Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
See, Item 11B, Revised Preliminary Plans. O'Neal, do we need to handle these individually, or can we just go ahead and do them kind of all at the same time, or how you?
Same issue. You could, you can, I mean, you can open a public hearing. I think we could vote on them all at one time. I don't see a problem with that, under the circumstance of looked at them, and they're all asking for the same variance. You can vote on them separately if you want, or you can vote on them together.
My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering. How y'all doing tonight? We're representing the developer of Woodgate Estates, Stonegate Manor, and Keystone of Galvez. I just assumed that we're going to talk about them together because they're the same thing. All three of these subdivisions, the preliminary plats was approved by this, this board, and they're in various stages of the process. And the developer is wanting to come in there and change the typical street section by adding a three-foot landscape servitude along the right-of-way in order to put street trees in. These trees will have one per lot, and this will kind of set his development, of course, off from, from the others, making it, I guess, more pretty, if you will, and so forth. And the trees themselves will be maintained by the individual lot owners and purchased by the developer, and overseen by the homeowner's association of each individual subdivision. So it's just an added feature that he wants to do for these developments. It's a, so what you would have is you'd have your right-of-way, your three-foot landscape servitude, your five-foot sidewalk servitude on both sides of the road, and then your 12-foot utility servitude on outside of that. So all we're doing is changing the typical street section by adding in this three-foot on each side of the road that he can put trees in. So we ask for your approval on this, and I'll be answering any questions you have.
Okay, comments, questions from Commissioners?
I think you need a gold star for what you're doing. Two gold stars. You need a motion, I'll move to approve.
That's what I was thinking. We had to hold a public hearing on it.
I can't believe you have to come here to plant trees.
A revised preliminary.
Again, I can't believe you required to do, to go through this to plant trees.
Well, it's not just that. They're also changing, there's a name duplication, so they're. If there are no other comments or questions from Commissioners, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on any of these developments, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from Commissioners?
I have a question. Mr. Murphy, I agree with O'Neal, you could get a gold star, but I did have a question. I wondered if anyone would ever plant any bushes in this landscaping servitude that would block the roads. That's my only question.
From my understanding, it's only going to be trees. And I, I'm not sure, is that all that's going to be allowed? That's all that's going to be allowed, is the one tree per lot.
Is there anything that would stop the homeowner from coming in at a later date and adding trees?
The homeowner's association.
Excuse me, not trees, bushes.
The homeowner's association is going to oversee that. I'm not sure of the actual legality of stopping them. It is going to be a, you know, landscape servitude. So from my knowledge, it's just going to be the one tree.
I have a question. What kind of trees are you guys planting? I know that sounds like a funny question, but some trees can, the root system can really damage.
Well, they call them small root ball trees. It's a, it's for street planting.
That's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I'll make the motion to approve the revised preliminary subdivision for Woodgate Estates, Stonegate Manor, and Keystone of Galvez, and the name change as well.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 11C, Planning Commission Minutes from the February 14, 2007 meeting in reference to Wesley Place. At last month's meeting, we made some, there were some revisions to the, to comments made by a resident in our meeting that were found to be an error, and this is just an issue to go ahead and change, the minutes back to the way they were originally written. If there are any, if the Commissioners have any comments or questions, we do have the resident in the audience with us this evening for clarification.
I'll make a motion to accept the corrections to the minutes.
I have a motion to, how do I want to put this? Go ahead and correct or go back to the original minutes by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any objection or discussion? Motion passes. I have Item 11D, Consideration for Adopting the PUD Conceptual Plan Submittel Checklist, PUD Final Development Plan Submittel Checklist, SPUD Final Development Plan Submittel Checklist, and the PUD slash PUD, SPUD Final Plan Submittel Checklist. This was deferred from our February 14, 2007 meeting. We wanted to try, at the time, I understand, we wanted to try and have all Commissioners present for that. I think everybody's had ample opportunity to review the checklist, so we should be able to proceed, whether we want to go with them, or we feel that they should be revised, or what's the pleasure of the Commission? Comments or questions from Commissioners?
I think the ERA did an exemplary job. It's a very comprehensive list.
Are you offering a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 12, pertaining to motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn by Julio Dumas, seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We'll meet back here in about 10 minutes for the zoning commission meeting.